... meeting Tuesday, April 18th at 2:23. Can we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we need a designated person to start the pledge.
One of the new guys.
We usually get Kevin.
He said, "I."
Yeah.
That'd kick us off.
Yeah, natural leader.
Yeah, I don't have any announcements. Any of the other members have any announcements they would like to?
No.
You? No. I don't see anybody in the audience with anything they want to add. So the first thing on our agenda is a follow-up of the layout of the public ways for Stonegate, Cobblestone Lane, and Meeting House Lane, and possible votes. Do you have any update on that, Mr. Benoit? And if we could just state your name because Lisa's gonna have to listen to the recordings.
Sure. Good evening, gentlemen. Matthew Benoit, Director of Community Development, Town Douglas. Last we met, we met with the attorney representing the owner of the two cul-de-sacs that are that have been laid out for the selectmen. And the question was to go to town council to see at what stage we could or what we could do and if we could execute this without some of the items that are on the checklist. I did speak to both of our town councils. I spoke to Rich Bowen. I also spoke to Brian Winter out of Jay Talmadge's office, just to get some information. So this really boils down to three steps. And the three steps are getting the road laid out in front of the selectmen, right? Which they have provided us. They have given us the road layouts. I do have the copies on the tables. Those have been reviewed by our engineer. They have been -- they've gone out of the field and made the changes that needed to be made. And the planning board has voted to support this article as it came forward to the selectmen. So the step is that the selectmen are just voting on the layout to -- so the step would be if the selectmen decide to vote on the layout, they would then approve the layout, have to sign the Mylar, which isn't here this evening, before town meeting. It would have to be recorded before town meeting. And then you have 180 days after that to get all the other items in order, easements, title, all that stuff. So that's -- so the steps are vote on the layout, go to town meeting to see if the town wants to take it on as a public road. And then you have 180 days after that to get all the paperwork in order and all this mess and stuff. So I have to answer any questions from there.
So there's a -- in this packet, there's an email dated April 5th from Rich.
Yeah.
The checklist is actually a policy guideline.
Right.
Okay. The real question is whether the selectmen have the information necessary for them to vote to the layout of the way.
Correct.
As you know, town meeting does not accept the way.
Right.
Town meeting votes to accept the selectmen's layout of the way.
Correct.
It is not clear as to what information the attorney is proposing to give you later. If it's something that you need now, it's worth advising the attorney that if the selectmen don't vote to lay out the way, there will be nothing for the town meeting to vote upon.
Right.
So are you saying that we -- we've met everything except for that follow-up information that Henry has to get in order to record it?
Right.
So what happens if he doesn't get it? If we vote to accept the way and he doesn't get that, what mechanism is in place to stop that process?
Yeah. From what I understand, the selectmen voted to accept the way. And it got recorded. They brought in the Mylar, and then it got recorded. And then it went to town meeting, and the town meeting voted to accept it as a public way. And then any of the paperwork later down the line, titles, something fails, it would just die. And it wouldn't -- it wouldn't make it to a public way. That's the way it was described to me.
But what I'm not following is if we vote to accept the way and then town meeting votes to accept our --
Yeah.
-- acceptance.
Sure.
Right? The process is in motion. What?
Right.
Either you have that you get to that point.
Sure, sure. So if you vote to accept the way, it would get recorded still under the ownership of the owner right now, not the town. So the way would be accepted as a way, but still under private ownership. So if town meeting does their vote after, that's recorded. And the town doesn't end up being able to take the transfer because of some sort of title issue or something. The road -- the road would still exist as laid out by the selectmen, would still remain a private way if the paperwork doesn't follow.
So it just --
Does that include a deed from the final step?
Yes.
So that's the trigger?
Easements and everything.
So that's the trigger, so they would know we're not exposing the town any liability by doing that?
Yeah, the town doesn't -- right.
Is there any reason not to accept these streets?
I mean, typically, there'd be a Mylar before you this evening to sign. So one thing is, will you want to chase the applicant to get the Mylar here in the next, was it 13 days?
So we don't have the Mylar to sign?
It is not here this evening, no.
Like we typically would.
Right. That is one thing.
So that would be at our next meeting?
Yeah, and the way, well, which would be on the evening of the town meeting. So the way we left it with the applicant when he came before us last time was that it was on the warrant, but he had to use the time to try to get that information. So would it be unreasonable to hold this off until just before town meeting, the vote on at that point?
I don't believe we can, because the layout needs to be signed and recorded before town meeting, according to town council.
And if we did at our next meeting, would it be at the town meeting?
You wouldn't have 14 days.
Right.
Or seven, whatever that --
Hmm. Right.
I probably should go ahead.
I think, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I think the town has done its job. We have -- we have done its --
Yeah, there's no doubt in my mind that.
And at this point, it's really on the applicant. Does the board feel they've received enough information at this point from them? That's what you realize at this point.
Can't we move forward today with an expectation that, well, I guess it's just sight unseen. We've just gotta go.
No, because now, if I understood it correctly, if we vote on to approve it tonight, now we have to try to find out when this Mylar shows up. And then we have to sign that, and then they have to do that with seven to 14 days prior to the town meeting?
Yeah, so they voted the Mylar here, and then we would go and sign it in the office and --
So the town meeting is seven days from next Monday. So if it's 14 days, we're already out of --
Yes. And then I have to bring it to the planning board for them to sign it on the 27th, if the selectmen decide to vote to endorse it.
This appears to be highly unusual to try to go through this process.
I agree.
I'm really not comfortable accepting something without all the proper documents. It's difficult for the applicant. He already tried to go through this last fall, and because it has to be done on an annual town meeting, we pushed him off to now, but for whatever reason, his representation didn't get the documents that we need in order to sign off on it, so.
What's the disadvantage to the applicant if we put it off and he starts to do the cycle again?
Well, he has to wait until next --
Yeah, does it pose any financial burden?
Just he wants to get his bond back.
Yeah, bond, yeah.
It does. It is also possible that we may ask for some maintenance again. The stormwater basins were maintained. They were cleared, as we asked them to do back in September or so. If we wait another summer, we're probably gonna ask them to do it again. We might have to have another engineer review, just in case there are any cracks that formed or anything like that. So it might add another financial burden, yes.
So we could approve, accept tonight, and then coincide, and then when the Mylar is here, go in and sign it, and that's?
Provided that it shows up before next Monday.
Then it's --
Right.
Then it's the ball's in their court.
Well, the ball's in their court now.
Yeah.
Right. It has been since, if you look through your paperwork, this actually stuck in 2018.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. September 20th, 2018 was the first time they went through it.
Long time.
Yeah, no, I know it's a long time, but the amount of attempts to go through this and still not have the -- all the requirements that you need, I just don't know what position it puts the town in.
Well, I don't think we have any exposure. If we were to do that, they -- the ball's in their court. Either they produce the Mylar, and we do it timely, and they go to the planning board.
Or they -- we went to the planning board, so they just have to get recorded.
No, they have to be signed by the --
By the selectmen and get recorded.
Selectmen and --
And the planning board.
Yes.
Oh, the planning board has to sign it too?
They don't have to. They sign it after you do.
Yeah.
So why don't we just buy a little time in the pocket, prove the layout here, give them the clock ticks?
Yeah.
And the ball's in their court.
Yeah.
Otherwise?
I don't have, sorry, through the -- to Mr. Chairman, I don't have issues with the way the layout plan is presented. It's just, they've given us the plans. The plans are legit, they've been reviewed. But I agree with you, we don't have a Mylar in front of us. We're missing steps two, three, and four, even though they are policy guidelines, but they are missing. Typically, the board likes to see all that stuff in advance, and that is our policy, so.
Well, number two is a letter from town council. We don't even have that.
Because that's about them reviewing all those other documents and making sure that those are in order. Yeah. But as in my conversation with Mr. Winter, it's like those items have 180-day clock after town meeting to get those in order by law. Our policy helps us get everything in advance, but they do have more time technically under the statute. I think he said 4181i might have been the right section.
Keith, have you ever seen this done this way before?
No.
Me neither. I think it's a little late to the table.
Unfortunately, I think the burden's on the applicant to provide the things that we need to.
Yeah, but they still can't.
Right, the layout, to you, Mr. Chairman, the layout should be today.
We only have the layout. So you're gonna approve, you're gonna approve the layout off of this, not off the Mylar?
Right.
That you're supposed to sign after you approve it, so you signed it.
Well, if I saw something wrong, then I wouldn't sign it. So there's two steps. You could theoretically not sign the Mylar, I guess.
Okay.
Another safety valve.
So what are you comparing it to, that you would find something wrong? I'm just, I'm not trying to be devilish, I'm just asking you. I can't look at it next week and say, "All right, I see something wrong," because I don't even know what I looked at the first time, because I have nothing to look at other than a photo copy piece of paper. This has been going on. How long were those packets sitting on the table in Lisa's desk? Two months?
I must have introduced this article in March, when the warrant opened, right before it closed. So that's, and then we scheduled, maybe even February.
No, it was before that, because those papers --
Oh, correct.
All those plans and everything were sitting in there, waiting for Ms. Lane to come in and provide whatever it was that you needed.
Right. Yeah, we tried this in October, or even September, for a fall town meeting, but they didn't have all the documents then. And we were just asking if it could get on a fall warrant, and it turns out it cannot.
So even if they were to do that, is it safe to say at this point the town is scurrying around, trying to meet these deadlines that have been sitting around for a while?
We seem to be doing it on behalf of the applicant at this point.
And the applicant is not here to lobby for his or her case?
They were.
Yeah. Hell, I understand the wanting to move things forward, but we seem to be bending over backwards and taking a leap of faith when one might not be necessary.
I agree.
Okay.
So we're not taking any action, I guess. It's, we don't need to vote or anything, or?
Yeah.
You requesting anything from us tonight?
No, sir.
No.
Do we have our call tomorrow?
We do.
Okay.
Okay, so we choose not to take any action on it, just pass over it for now?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is a town meeting discussion with the town moderator. The town clerk will be absent this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Town moderator, Keith Menard. So I'm gonna start with the general, if that's right, before we kind of get into the nitty-gritty. And for the past few years, I think probably since COVID, when we started doing the outdoor meetings, have tried to find ways to make town meeting more efficient. Not necessarily quicker or faster, but more efficient. In other words, giving people time to discuss the topics that need discussing and the stuff that doesn't necessarily warrant a huge discussion, to move over more quickly. I didn't like the way the last meeting went. I didn't feel like I did a very good job, and I felt like I, the pendulum, I let the pendulum swing a little too far in the quick direction over efficient direction. So in that, I kind of wanted to go over the, kind of how I expect things to run this And some of it will be very similar. The differences are very minor, but I think that they're important. I've liked the way that the motion from the floor has gone, or in the case where a motion needs to be read, I read it. It saves a bunch of time of people, you know, wandering around and that stuff. And realistically, if you haven't already read the warrant or the flyer, then what are you doing there? It is legislative meeting, and you should be doing your homework. Then we get the second. At that point, then I'll ask if there's any questions, or would anyone like to speak on the issue? If there's none, then we move to the, whether or not you want to move by unanimous consent or a vote, or, you know, whatever the article takes at that point. However, if there is speaking on the article, I need somebody to be prepared, kind of the way that we used to be, to come up and give a proponent's speech. Because I feel like that was kind of like the missing part of when, "Yeah, I have questions." And then it automatically went to, like, "Okay, who's gonna answer that question, and where's that gonna go?" And we still need that, you know, to be able to figure out who the best person to answer a question is, or to speak on a point. But we also need, if there's questions before those questions and things come up, for somebody to come up and say, you know, "This is why we're doing this." Does that make sense? So if you guys can kind of have in your, you know, list, kind of who would be speaking on each article, and who's the best to speak on each article, you know, like I said, the way that we kind of used to, I think that will help kind of balance the pendulum a little bit. Any questions on that? So Articles 1 to 3, we're still gonna kind of do the old way, which is there's not, you know, there's never really been a proponent's speech on Articles 1 through 3. We go through, we read the subsections. If there's any holds, then we go back into that section. You know, then we talk about the general budget and move the whole thing. It's messy, it always has been, but that's where the, most of the meat is on the meeting. Then Articles -- spare me one second. Articles 5 through 8, we'll go ahead and take those together. And, you know, again, where those are just really kind of boilerplate, procedural, I'm gonna go right to unanimous consent on that, and hopefully move right through 5 through And then, like I said, everything else will be kind of as per normal. I think we are probably better, best off on Article 11 with having you come right up and, you know, we won't wait, we'll just go right into the proponent's speech. I thought your, you and I had a quick discussion before the meeting, and I thought your explanation was perfect. So I would, I'd pretty much lead with that. That said, you know, the zoning bylaws and these kind of things can tend to wind up being more thorny, as the town has a history of really hating when the state agency comes to them and says, "Do this or else." So we'll see how that goes. Any questions for me so far?
Just to clarify, your expectation from our office is to be prepared to not make the motion, but make the proponent's speech for the?
Yes.
Maybe it's not even a proponent's speech, it's an outline as to what's currently being before a town meeting.
Well, so, you know, you're the body that moves these, right? So, you know, however you phrase it, it's still a proponent's speech, right? You're coming up and saying, like, you know, "We put this in front of you thinking you should vote for it, and here's why." You know, and if you think the explanation is just very rote of, "This is what it is," then that's fine, that's up to you. Yeah, and then afterwards, after the proponent's speech, I'll take back over the mic, and then, you know, decide who gets to answer, who has to answer what.
And you do that after you announce the article and see if there's any follow-up?
Correct, yeah. So it'd basically be, you know, is there a motion to, you know, move this article as printed in the warrant?
Yep.
Yes. Your second, second. You know, would anyone like to speak? Or, you know, have any questions on the article? Hearing none, you know?
Yeah, if there's any questions, say for capital, if I make any questions, then I'd go up and talk about capital.
Right.
Yep.
And so you just want to try to have somebody who's knowledgeable about each article ready to go?
Or who might not be here tonight.
Yeah. Which I believe is the way that it's usually chosen.
It's been done in the past.
Yeah. So, and like I said, I think just kind of when, when things, you know, that seemed like maybe they were a little more simple, when people started having questions on it, like I said, I feel like that's where, at the last meeting, things got kind of short-circuited of, like, "All right, who wants to answer that? Who wants to speak on that?" And it was just kind of more like haphazard. So I think if we can kind of drill that down, it'll make for a more efficient meeting. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. So I just, I have a couple of questions. So I guess we'll start with Article 1 on the annual. Just from my own question, I noticed that there was an increase in FinCom expenses.
That's for the flyer and the postage.
So why is, because it seemed like it was higher in this year than in --
Yeah, but it goes by the actual cost. So it's the cost of the printing of the flyer, so we get an estimate based on the size of what's being mailed. So it just costs more, and the postage is really the biggest expense of finance.
Okay. Do you want to come up here, Jane? It just might make it easier, I don't know, like. I apologize, it was not for me to invite her up to --
I gave you the liberty to.
Thank you.
You're full worn.
Yeah, no, I --
But just for the record, Keith, that gives us one chip for the --
[laughing]
That we can cash in if we need to.
That seems fair.
Okay.
Economic development always seems to wind up having questions around it. I noticed that, and, yeah, I'm sorry, I am on special town meeting, not on annual.
So again, economic development is strictly for wages, and it's based upon where the budget is at this time and what we need to get to the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So just as a broad explanation of this article, I work with the departments to see where they are at this point in the year, because I like to take as much, take care of it as much as I can at town meeting, as opposed to going to reserve fund or an interdepartmental transfer in the last two months of the year. So these are needs within the departments that they identify, and like I said, we try to take care of as much as we can here.
And it looks like there's an increase in wages for, in the annual as well. Is there?
I won't speak to that, but just for this, so we looked at where we were up so much, we anticipated the amount of hours he's hourly now through the end of the year. If he doesn't use all of those hours, and again, we're pretty conservative at this point, then it will be turned back into free cash, or close to the general fund.
Okay. And so for, like, next year, are we hiring someone, or are we expecting more hours from this person?
No, we're converting the position from an hourly to a salary position. Currently, the employee is hourly and works well beyond what we budget, just to get the work done.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, he reports directly to me, I supervise his work fairly closely. And there's not a lot of wasted time here. This is, we crush his work every time he comes in, and just has a lot of balls in the air with grants and grant administration and reporting requirements. He's a busy guy. So it's actually not efficient for the town to pay him hourly, because at some point, if he works more than 40 hours in a week, and that happens from time to time, he's entitled to overtime. So we're gonna move him to, because of the confidential information that he manages in his role as a project manager, into a M1, management's grade-one position, and his salary will be flat, no matter how many hours he works. It'll also reflect the true level of responsibility that he has, because he does have a significant set of duties.
Right. Yeah, there's, it's one of the positions that seems to get a lot of scrutiny at town meeting. So I was just curious, you know, what the background on that is.
I think the other piece of the background, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moderator, is that it is intended that this position will not be permanent, that this is, we've hired this particular person with a skill set and has worked out very well for us as we go through these projects. But at some point, two, three years hence, those projects will be done.
Should we put up like a slide of Liam Neeson saying, you know, "I have a very specific set of skills"?
John Wick.
So back to FinCom for just one second, and I'm leaping between meetings, which is a super bad precedent, but for FinCom wages, I mean, FinCom expenses, why are we expecting them to go back down?
Again, it's a placeholder. It really depends on the size of the warrant we mailed. And if you notice the last couple, we've had some very big articles.
Yeah.
You know, when Matt gets involved.
Right?
He doesn't do two pages on anything.
So.
We're striking that byline, replacing it with the Harry Potter series, all of it.
So we may, again, we may see it again next May, depending on what it costs us, but that tends to be the placeholder.
Okay. And back to special, as far as ambulance wages, is that just because they're busy, or are we adding people, or?
Are we on the special or the annual?
Special.
Special.
We are. We are running a little bit hot on the ambulance side because we have been short. So we've had a lot of overtime as lieutenants and other experienced people are covering shifts for us.
Okay.
So that's pretty much why we're here this year. It's hard to explain to people, the same people staff both fire and ambulance. And it is somewhat artificial that we put some people in one bucket and others. So what we've tried to do to keep it nice and clean and to be as accurate as we can be, those who are paramedics, and it's not everyone, are in the ambulance side, they tend to be more expensive employees. So if we started the year with one or two people on the ambulance side that were not medics, and then we moved, as people came in and out, we moved all the medics into that budget, you would see this kind of increase. It's coupled with a decrease in fire wages because that's
Yes, okay, the push and pull of it.
Yeah.
Okay. And Article Five, are we adding a second vehicle?
The proposal is, as requested by the chief of the department, to add a command vehicle. The existing command vehicle will remain in service through the end of its useful life, which won't be 10 years, but it'll be, could be two, three, four years.
And it's, and it's all expenses along with that? So maintaining two vehicles as opposed to just one?
Well, that particular article is strictly to purchase it.
To purchase, well, but the way it reads
All associated costs.
All associated costs.
If we have to put
On the purchase.
Yeah, any equipment in there to just get the vehicle up and functional. If it has to be lettered, you know, all of those things, but it's only for that vehicle.
So it's, it's not actually like the maintenance and that stuff?
No. Go into an operating unit.
Okay. All right, great, so moving into, back into, I apologize, the annual. The first one was animal control, I noticed that that one, is that just to round up stray cows or? Because we're going from 17,000 up to 43, more or less.
Yeah, so the actual change was, if I may, Mr. Chairman, was last year. We joined a much larger group of municipalities to share resources, to share people, and to enhance the level of service provided to taxpayers. So we now have 24/7, 365 coverage for animal control. And by bringing Blackstone in, we have a shelter to bring the animals to. So it's putting together all these disparate pieces, thanks to a lot of effort by the chief in Uxbridge. Uxbridge got a so-called community best practices grant to pull together this regionalized effort, which offset everyone's cost in the first year of the agreement. That grant was a one-year grant. So when the grant went away, our costs went up to 42.9. This is still a bargain compared to what other communities pay for this service. You can imagine if we had one employee or they were on call, they either wouldn't provide the same level of service or if we had them on all the time, we'd be paying them basically an annual wage, which would be at least that, if not more. So we're still just buying part of an FTE, but we're getting the benefit of being part of the whole group.
And is, is it, is it one FTE that, or full-time equivalent, that services the valley or is there multiple people?
So there's multiple people, you're taxing my memory. The moderator is taxing my memory, Mr. Chairman.
That's what he does best.
I believe we have one
Find me very taxing.
One truly full-time One truly full-time person, and I believe we're using like a weekend floater and then an overnight. I think we have more than one person involved, one is full-time.
And we also benefit from the shelter in Blackstone, correct?
Well, yeah, that's, that's a really big deal. So we're not renting cage space and we're not having to scramble the fine space of our own. We have a place to take the animals.
Education, the personnel contract settlement? What?
Oh, nothing.
He's just a happy guy.
I just, you know, you want me to put on my ogre hat? I suppose. What is the question?
What is it? Like what, like, because usually it's, you know, for, for Douglas Public Schools, it's like, okay, here's your, here's your money, you go spend it however you want, that, I just, that one is
Right, so I'll tell you what was intended if I may.
You also might want to hit stay.
Yeah. As long as we advertise this link on the agenda, we have to be online in case somebody wants to join. The intent was that we would continue to provide the Douglas Public Schools with a bottom-line budget allocation, which is what we've always done.
Right.
And in the past, it would be, I think one low year, it was 1% year-over-year increase, and then one and a half, it was never a whole lot of money. They came into a contract negotiation round and there was an opportunity to work with the union and with the school department leadership to change the way teachers are compensated, to basically take their trajectory and make it go like this. So we were paying people more upfront, which would help us competitively to recruit new teachers, but their, their steps would be smaller.
Yep.
So as they progressed through the table, they wouldn't have this volatile effect on the town budget. Because at the top end of the scale, they had some, you know, 11% steps. If you had a whole cohort of teachers, nine or 10 people that you hired 10 years ago, 11 years ago, and they all hit that step at the same time, the payroll would jump. And so there would be this aberrational volatility in the school department's budget. So we wanted to level all that out, smooth it all off and try to tie it as best we could to the rate of growth of the town's revenues. So that they would no longer outpace the ability of the town to pay. So the deal was, in my, my opinion, apparently, even though it was the consensus of everyone involved at the time, we would do a 2% year-over-year and we would commit internally to budget a 2% year-over-year for three years. And that, in the first two years of the contract, we would transfer from free cash an amount sufficient for the school department to, it softens the blow of absorbing this new contract. But the thought was after three years of twos, by year three, they would be on their own and they would no longer need a subsidy from the town. This is a classic subsidization strategy, is how safer grants work in the world of fire departments, you know, you hire a bunch of firefighters, the feds pay 100% of their salary, then 50%, then none. This is classic. So that line item was left separate because it does not close to the base. It is a one-time subsidy of the free cash available to us this year. Now, it's been misinterpreted on the other side of the, of the coin here and we're working to try to get past that misunderstanding, but as the finance committee voted the budget, they voted the budget that we intended, I intend, I'll speak for myself, which is a base of 2% increase and then that subsidy for one month last year.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't rattle a hornet's nest there. Gotcha, okay. So moving along, Articles five through eight, we've already been through that. Article nine, is there a, I always like to kind of give an overview of and you can kind of see it, I believe it's in the police budget where it says, this represents, to use a previous number, 2% increase on base, 2% increase on steps. What, what does Article nine show? Is there an overlying theme to it, you know, as far as like from previous year to this year? And follow-up will be, can we get a slide for that?
You can get a couple of slides, I think.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it is hard for me to be efficient talking about this because I've been so close to it for so long.
It's also, this also goes back to like this is a media issue, right? Like this is the stuff that we should be talking and understanding.
Fundamentally very important for the town.
Yeah.
Going forward. We're trying to solve a couple of problems. One, I'll do bullet points if I can. One is we need to pay people more competitively to attract them and to retain them once they work for the town. Part of the reason for that, bullet number two, is that for a long time, the town was struggling financially and really didn't do much to enhance the competitiveness of the salaries. So as we sit here today, if we go out to the marketplace to hire people, we don't typically start them at step one because nobody would take the job. We've been hiring people at step five, depending on what grade they're in, anywhere from step three to steps five or six. So effectively, most of the existing compensation system isn't even being used because it's just too, it's not generous enough. The existing system, I make this with an exclamation point, the existing system is being thrown out and a new one is going to replace it. And the new one is the one that appears here in the warrant. It is very similar to the old one in that it has the same basic framework, management, office assistants, public maintenance, and other specialty tasks in the miscellaneous bucket. But what we've done is we've reduced the number of grades and we've stretched out the availability of steps to take into account not only merit but longevity with the town. So someone who's been here for 30 years would be adding step that we call step 30. It isn't really the 30th step, it's only the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ninth step. But you don't get that ninth step until you've been here for 30 years, all right? And it, I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell. What does it end up costing? It's not terribly unlike doing a seven and a half or 8% COLA, right? For a limited number of employees, and that's the other thing that's very important, is this only covers non-union, non-contractual employees. So that's going to be highway and town hall and a couple of office assistants, one at highway, one at fire. And it doesn't deal with those who are already covered by a contract. So police are already taken care of in their budget, fire taken care of in their budget. This is only for those people who've never had representation and who frankly will be the last group of employees in town to get any kind of raise change.
Yeah, historically, that's been a major topic of conversation at town meeting, at least as long as I've been in town, so I would flag
One other point on Matt, Matt's work on, with a team of five people that did this work, the employees also being properly classified. Some of them were misclassified in their roles. So now there's actual job description and classification for those employees. So you'll see some of them that, that looks like a dramatic jump, but it's, actually they weren't properly classified in their role.
So this one, I would definitely say we're, we're going to go to a proponent's speech. I'm not going to, hey, any questions? Because I feel like
There'll be questions.
Yeah, well, there may or may not be, I mean, it's, the explanation is, you know, very well thought out. But I think it's something that, that needs to be explained at town meeting, you know, so that there's a record of it and, you know, that everybody who's, who wants to understand can understand.
And the status also includes library, council on aging, and water sewer.
So, yeah, who's drawing the shorts there on that one?
Morse.
Yeah, so like I said, we'll definitely, we'll, we'll get, we'll definitely
Oh, yeah.
He was waiting to throw it in.
He did that to me a long time ago. Long memory.
Capital plan. I'm going to, I'm going to throw this one out there just because when I was reading this, I was, I'm just very curious how we think for this, for the next three years that paving expenses are going to remain level?
Say that again, I didn't hear you.
I'm just, I'm curious how we think for the next three, four years that paving expenses will be level?
So they, you're referring to the 360,000 in the pavement? So what we, what the proposal was done during, during the capital process was to match the current chapter 90 money. And on average, they get about 363,000 a year. So we matched that, so now that budget increases to 720.
Sorry.
That budget increases to 720 and depending on how the, the highway department utilizes some of the other funds they get for crack filling and potholes and things like that, they end up with a decent budget so they can actually fix some of the roads in town. According to that STAN Tech report that we had, they suggested, I think it was 1.5 or 1.7 million over the next 20 years to get the roads up to an acceptable level. So this past, last year or this current year that we're in, the 360 that we put in, he was, the highway department was able to fix quite a few roads in town. They did a portion of Northwest Main Street, they did a portion of Southwest Main Street. I believe they did a section of Vine Street and Cemetery Street. So they got quite a bit done. So it's an important thing for us to add on to it, so it's not just the 360, they already have a budget, we're trying to get them up to a respectable level so they can actually fix something.
Yeah, it just seemed to me like with, with the, the cost of petroleum and everything, you know, increasing that that's
They'll take more if you have it.
My, I'll put it this way.
I don't know if that's a suggestion from the moderator.
It is, it is not, the only, it just, like
Do you want me to speak on this or would you prefer somebody else? No.
Yeah, no, my, my ankles are very happy about what happened to Cemetery Street, so yeah, I walk my dog over there a lot.
And not knowing that ahead of time, it actually worked out pretty good.
See, you shouldn't have said that, I thought you were out there running.
Yeah.
I just got to give you credit for running.
No, it's, it's the old saying, if a bear is chasing me, I'll run. If you see me running, you should start as well, that's
As far as the capital plan, it's consistent with what we put in our five-year plan last year with the exception that the tables for the primary school, they, and they received the donation of some used tables from Blackstone Valley, which will buy them a couple more years on that, but they had an urgent need for their HVAC units for the administration offices, so.
Yeah, no, everything looked, you know, I just, I just thought it was curious that
Putting it as part of the record, might as well just explain it real quick. And then we just had a couple increases, the, the dump truck went up in costs as well as the sidewalk, sidewalk tractor, so.
Not surprising. And then Article 11, rock to the races on that one.
That'll be Matt's.
Yep.
That's why it costs so much.
Yeah, yeah.
He'll be falling asleep at that point.
I was even asking, I was asking about recreational vehicles. You're supposed to anchor a four-wheeler, like what, it makes no sense, but with the state, I guess ours is not to question. And then it, I already overheard about the, you guys already covered Article 12, so those really all the questions that I had. Yeah, hopefully we'll have a, a good, efficient town meeting and learn some more lessons.
Amen.
We do every day, right?
Yep. Any other questions for me?
Nope.
All right. Look forward to seeing you all there.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Jean.
Next thing on our agenda is the annual town election warrant.
No.
No?
No. I'll make a motion that we approve the warrant for the annual town election.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll have to sign the, we have the copies here, we just have to sign them before we leave tonight.
Oh, okay.
The, number four is designate a board of selectmen member to hazard mitigation committee.
So, Mr. Chairman, our hazardous mitigation, our hazmit plan is up for renewal, they have to be renewed every five years. I think at least two, maybe three of the select board participated last time, because last time was our first iteration, and we did-
The pre-me.
A lengthy planning process. It was a lot of community leaders, we met in this room, to identify the biggest potential hazards to the town. And the idea is, if, once you identify them, and you begin to scope out what the risk is, then you can apply for grants in future years to mitigate those hazards. So this is part of a, you know, there are multiple plans that we have. One is all hazards, so our so-called SEP plan, which we just renewed already this, last year. Then we have a continuing, or continuity of operations plan, the so-called POOP, which is mostly IT-related, but it also has to do with personnel. That's one piece that we're missing, and we need to put in place. But hazmit, we were able to get a grant for some support from CMRPC to help us get through this and file timely, and stay up to date. It does require that the board appoint at least one of its members to participate.
How often do they meet?
I don't think anything is set up beyond just trying to get the committee set up.
Get it set up, yeah.
I don't think we'll meet much more than three or four times, I'd be surprised, for an hour each.
Do you need this done tonight?
Uh-
I'm not opposed, I'm just asking where Kevin's on here.
He might have an interest, so it might be courteous to give him a chance to participate if he wants.
I would entertain a motion to appoint him if that was necessary.
Well, I would make a motion that we appoint Kevin to the Hazard Mitigation Committee, knowing how well he mitigates hazards.
Second. He has spoken to me about coveting this position.
It's a passion for hazards.
I see. A motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
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 Boom.
Congratulations, Kevin.
He is officially a Duke of Hazard now?
He is.
Number five is-
Can't watch that show anymore, but I don't-
Number five is designate a board of selectmen member to the internal working team for the building designs. As I understand it, is to work with the, the newly hired house doctor.
Right, so Weston and Sampson's already done their kickoff meeting, and they've already been to a couple of facilities to just get their heads around the size of the project and what we're asking. I would like a member of the select board to be very much involved in this, because we are driving very hard to get to fall town meeting with conceptual design. And from that point, we would be looking for funding. So we have a short burn here, we've got to be really efficient, and the more, the merrier, in terms of the more eyes are on this, the better our product's going to be.
I'd be happy to do it, but that's up to the rest of the members, so.
Yeah.
If you want to make a motion on that, that's fine. If anybody else has an interest in it, that's fine as well.
I can't think of no one better to serve on the internal working team for building design than Mike Fitzpatrick, so I would make that motion.
Second. A motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the vote of confidence. Before, the next one is the meeting minutes, I'd just like to take them out of order. Can we go to the number seven vote on the- The buy-in, I'm just looking for the, for the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group equity buy-in, the return of the equity buy-in.
So, Mr. Chairman, when we joined this group, when it was founded in 2019, there was no bank account, right? But claims were going to be due as soon as we initiated our self-insurance program. So the three founding members all put in basically two months' worth of claims, in order to give us that, basically seed money, for cash flow purposes, with the thought that, once we got a stable trust fund, which we have now built, we would be given this equity back. Douglas transferred $227,370 from free cash, and we like that back. The way our participation agreement is written, these types of transactions or requests must be from a governing body. So I would respectfully ask that you assign this request, vote it, and we'll get our, our money back, closed backed into free cash before June 30th of this year. It's a pretty important part of our management of our reserve account, to get this money back.
Are other towns doing the same thing?
Well, here's the, the thing, I, we have had, this has been a very successful program for us.
Yeah.
The other two entities that put an equity buy-in were the Town of Webster and the Dudley Charlton School District, Regional School District. Dudley Charlton has had a tough year for claims, and so they may not really be in the best position to cash out their equity. And the Town of Webster, I haven't asked their town administrator what his intentions are, I think he might leave his in for a little while, maybe one more year.
So we have exposure that if we were all-
We have such a large surplus, we can take this out, and we still have a significant amount of cash to cover our claims.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we lose any standing within the group, not having, no?
No. In fact, we are the Bank of Douglas right now. We, we have a really big chunk of the month-to-month rolling balance.
Yeah.
It's attributed a hell of a lot of money on this program.
We're the smallest town in the program, and we've definitely, we've kicked it, and it's, right. And it's largely due to, you know, great participation from our employees that take the plan, so.
Move approval of the return of the equity buy-in of $227,370?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That leads us to the meeting minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the marked seven minutes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Administrator, your report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the first thing I would bring to the board's attention is, we're getting to that point with the installation of natural gas at the intersection of North and Gilboa, where we'll definitely feel it traffic-wise. And it has been somewhat challenging dealing with the installer, construction company for Eversource, while they've done nice work and have been fairly rapid about coming down Gilboa Street, that's a nice, easy dig, and now they're getting into the tough part. But we know there's a lot of ledge, and we know there's a lot of other pipes already in the ground, so a 36-inch stormwater pipe, water service, sewer service, there's a lot going on under North Street. So we're going to have to ask our residents to be patient as we work through this. Every effort is being made to always have one lane of traffic moving, and where possible, two. Sometimes it is better to go down to one lane, or close off a section of the road in the morning hours, so they can get moving, and stage all their work, and then, once they're able to get more organized and tighten up a little bit, then open up the other lane. It's just the nature of the beast here, though, that, this is difficult, right? You've got to get over the North Street Bridge, and then you're into that outcropping of ledge over near the landing. So that is probably going to take a good week, a week and a half, weather permitting, to get through all of this work. The plan seems to change every time I ask, every time Bob and Eric asks, but our best understanding right now is, we are pushing very hard for the gas line installation to be under the sidewalk on North Street. Couple of reasons why we feel strongly about that is that, in future, the Water, Waste Water Systems Manager prefers not to dig in the road with a gas pipe. So if he knows exactly where the gas pipe is, that it's not in the roadway, and he's fixing a break, one of his mains under North Street, he won't have to be quite as worried about accidentally bumping gas, gas service. I mean, obviously, you have DigSafe, but, you know, in the middle of the night when you have a break, it's just a lot easier to know where the gas line is. There will be any number of borings and other exploratory efforts made in the middle of the street, though, because the gas company, for their purposes, they prefer it to be under the street. It's easier to dig up than not chopping through the concrete of a sidewalk. So there are differences of opinion, and ultimately, it's going to be the physical reality that wins out, where the thing goes. But going back to my original point, especially people who travel through that part of town multiple times during the day, need to be mindful of the signs. We'll try to keep the signs and the town's website up to date with the latest information. But, you know, between weather and other technical issues, you know, this has been a little bit harder to pin down than all the rest. Secondly, you will notice substantial progress being made on the construction of the bridge over the Mumford River, and daily now, the reports come in from the testing agency on the rebar, and all the shock concrete, and everything else that's been done there. And it's an interesting process. The last time anybody's watched a bridge being built in Douglas, probably 100 years ago.
It's a nice cover, nice cover on the bridge to make it blend in.
So the, the selection of the decorative element was done to try to make the bridge match the large concrete, I mean, not concrete, granite slabs that are, make up the existing dam, that's, you know, in front of the mill, so that there would be some natural flow there. The important factor here is that, in the spring, late spring, the new sewer pump station has to go in, very close to that location. So the notion is, we want these two crews to be separated, we want as much of the bridge to be done before the work on the sewer pump station begins. But it's going to be quite a, an interesting set of dynamics, different kinds of work, right? And we're right next to the water, and we're installing a pretty significant pump station. So just, again, we will communicate and over-communicate if we have to, in order to make sure this all works out.
I think overall, the traffic's been handled pretty well, you know, it's, I haven't bumped it, I go back and forth a bunch of times, and haven't been inconvenienced too much.
Right.
And the long route around isn't that much longer than-
It isn't, provided that North Street is open.
Yeah.
Right? So we had a water main break, you know, whatever that was, a week and a half ago now, which is a little bit troublesome.
The only biggest challenge you'll have is on North Street, is enduring that process with emergency services if needed, in that large complex.
In follow-up to the finance committee meeting the other night, the superintendent and business manager did come and meet with the finance director and me the day after, as promised, and they brought coffee, they didn't want my donuts, so I was happy to take the coffee. The bottom line is this, you know, I'm too long on the tooth in my profession to take these things personally anymore. I will point out that gaslighting the town administrator is not a terribly insightful or intelligent or even professional way to conduct business. If we need to be transparent about our budget needs, then we ought to be accountable, and go through the process of attending finance committee meetings and explaining what's going on with the budget. Truth of the matter is, the school committee budget was never delivered to the town until that meeting, the day after the finance committee voted. We were sitting in this room, and I said, "Where's your budget?" I mean, "What are we even looking at for your budget?" "Oh, guess we didn't send it to you." So I got, actually got the school committee's budget the day after finance committee voted. The point of fact here is that nobody can really say definitively, except for the school committee and administration, what it is in their budget that's growing. So what is it that you're asking town meeting and the town side to provide resources to match? What is the problem that we're trying to solve? And when I asked the next day, I asked, because I can answer that question in a nutshell, right? You want to know what accounts are growing most rapidly. Both Jean and I can just spit that out in five bullet points, it's simple, right? Your pension assessment, right? This year, it would be salaries and wages, and a couple of other expense items, and property and casualty insurance. And there you go, right? It's just that simple. You look at the chart, you see the numbers are growing, and that's what it is. I couldn't get a definitive answer that got me from zero to $333,000 in anything less than an hour. And even then, when we went back over it, it didn't add up. So there's work to do here, and it is my intention to just, you know, stay steady with this, and pass the ammunition, and just be straightforward about it. I think there are some drivers in that budget that have nothing to do at all with the teacher contract at all. And maybe when we check the list of all the things they're going to do to scare people, pink slips, sports, whatever else, like I say, it's all gaslighting. What it really comes down to is whether or not people are willing to admit what it is they need to get their job done. On the flip side, it may be very well, and I, this is where I'm at, it is necessary for the town to step up and help out with some of those expenses. Because if they are legally required services, then the town must provide them. And how is the best way to proceed? It's probably not to cut the existing programs, to find a way to get them more resources. So we can still have a constructive conversation. I would hope in the future that we don't need to take three steps back to take one step forward. It was an unnecessary use of energy. That largely explains how I'm spending my time these days, because I'm, I'm not going to look at a budget and say, "I know what I'm looking at," until I've really pulled it all together into a spreadsheet, and I'm able to turn it sideways and pivot tables and all the things that I do to try to get to the nitty-gritty. But I have my hunches, but I don't have enough numbers to feel like I ought to offer those opinions just yet. As far as the rest of our operations, I think the observant will notice that we took delivery of two trailers today at the fire station. That is, an understanding that the select board, the town administrator, the fire chief, and the fire union reached as a temporary stopgap measure to deal with air quality issues in the station. While they are not at the same level as the air quality issues in the Highway Barn, they are still significant, and we want to send a strong message to our employees that we support them and want them to work in a healthy environment. So we took this step, and electricity will be hooked up. Just a reminder to folks that people who work in that building, work in that building 24 hours. And some people right now, because we're a little short, maybe pulling doubles, that they're in the building 48 hours straight, if they're not on a call. So we have to be attentive to this, and that's why we're doing what we're doing. It is, though, temporary, because we have the engineering contract in place, and progress has been made this week on getting to plans to use, remember, you voted ARPA money to upgrade the HVAC system in the fire station. So we're looking at a turnaround of 18 months, 24 months. My hope is to get those trailers out of there in 12. I think those are the major highlights in- I think those are the major highlights, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, that brings us to open session topic, not readily anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Does anybody have anything here? No?
The only thing I would say is the, our brown house by the cemetery in VFW, it's got a nice big hole in it now. I'm not saying we-
It's a skylight.
It's a skylight.
It is actually, you know, if you remember the movie Alien, that an alien head is going to pop up, pop up only a second now, so.
Could make it a profit center, a Halloween house?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's in terrible shape and it just never makes the grade in terms of our capitals.
It's on, we just, remember last year, we appropriated $750,000 for the purchase of a fire truck, which we took delivery on it finally. This year, we have a pretty healthy budget, so hopeful that we can get it on the list within the next year or two and get rid of it. It just all depends on where we stand on our free cash.
Sure. Don't know why the spirit moved me to bring that up, but it did.
As a reminder to people.
I noticed that you do slow down a little bit and kind of gaze at it.
Gaze at it, there's an asbestos remediation effort that needs to take place there that compensates them.
No, I know. When we bought that, we were assured up and down that there was no asbestos in there, only to find out that-
You would have to be blind not to know.
Keith Brown was sitting on his floor and I told him that it's a society. He says, "How do you know that?" I said, "Look at it."
That was an easy one.
He used to retreat to the little house from his family, I think, you can see him in there.
In the little porch there?
Yeah.
Anyway, okay.
Is that it? You have everything? No?
No.
All set? Okay, so the-
Absent a member, do we need to go into executive session today?
Kevin did offer to be available by phone. Because I did ask him when he sent me a message saying that he wasn't going to be able to make it. I asked him what he wanted to do with the executive session. He wanted to move forward, he suggested that we move forward with it, and he wanted to be available by phone. I don't know.
Anything pressing?
Well, the, the contract, if you look at it, it's contract negotiations for the town administrator. In, in prior conversations with the town administrator, we should be, shouldn't just put down a blanket contract negotiations, we actually should list them so then if somebody asks or researches it in the future, they can figure out what we're talking about. Instead of trying to go through all the minutes and everything. So, we did get some information on our draft back, that's what we actually need to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a particular issue with anything. But absent the full board to actually have the contract and discuss it, I mean, I remember years past, we'd go through the contract as a group and highlight each section and discuss what's in there and why it's in there. We haven't done that yet, I-
Well, we haven't even met on this contract at all. We all put in our mockups, I would assume that we all did it, and sent them into Labor Council and he sent back his draft. There were some questions that I had in there, so I chose to do it in a different manner. Any edits I made, I did and read, anything that I had a question on, I did in green so that I could remember and it'd make it easier when we got to that point. I would think that we should meet as a full group and go over it, but. The, before we decide on that, I have a question, I thought of it earlier, is the- So, it's in two weeks, that is the town meeting, are we meeting that Tuesday after the town meeting? Because we have the meeting on the night of the town meeting.
Yeah, we typically would.
Yep, typically would, so. Because that's important for this particular subject, I don't think, because otherwise, we'd be pushing it out a month. So, I don't think that it's something we would do prior to the town meeting to sit there and negotiate. We wouldn't be afforded any time to do that.
So, I haven't seen your comments.
Nobody's seen any of them.
Yeah.
Well, we did, we got the draft back from town council, labor council.
If we, we will meet that Tuesday, I assume.
Yeah.
Can we have a lighter agenda and really commit to looking at this contract and-
So, this will be May 9th?
No, May 2nd.
May.
Oh, so the night right after then.
No, so last year, on my anniversary, was a town meeting, this year is a selectmen meeting. Attaboy. But it's 43 years, chances of me getting divorced is limited, so.
Does everybody agree with that?
I thought, Mr. Administrator, he's thinking, he's pondering a thought over there, so I want to afford him the opportunity to.
I, I'm only one person, so I don't know how much of the impact I'm going to have. But the town I live in is having its town meeting on that Tuesday, May 2nd, and it may be a very significant override vote.
Yeah.
And I would prefer to participate in the town meeting.
Yeah, no, that's-
At the same time, I need a contract, so.
Well, were you, did we think we wanted, is this ours, is this among ourselves? Yeah, but it's amongst ourselves, is that correct, on the, on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, you don't need to be here for it.
So, for that, we could still do that, so then. Anything that you're worried, worried about us dealing with within your absence, I would suggest that you don't put it on our agenda on that day.
Or put it on the Monday.
I should think it would be very light anyway. I don't really, you know, Lisa's not here to say if she has things in her folder that need to be dealt with for licenses or whatnot, but I think typically, that meeting after town meeting is very light. All of this, everything's been driving towards town meeting, so now it's kind of a natural falloff for a couple of weeks. So, I wouldn't think you'd have much more on your agenda, other than ministerial tasks.
Yeah, so if I could make a suggestion, everybody did actually look over that draft real well and your notes and become as prepared as possible so we can be efficient in the, at least the initial contract discussion. Do you have any, any?
No.
No, any problem with the waiting for a week?
I think that's good, I think we, I'll just speak for myself, but I support you going to town meeting and offering the townspeople there your sage advice and wisdom. I think that's important to be involved in.
I'm limited by my code of ethics of my profession and what I can do at town meeting, but I am allowed to ask questions, so.
Noted.
No, but it's important to be part of the process in your own local community.
But it's a really-
As we all exercise that, that right that we have, so.
How much? Two, three?
At least 3 million, but probably more.
All right, so with that-
Not going to steal any of our big buildings to close up your deficit, right?
No, no, I mean, it's, it's, the whole thing, the South Coast is run differently than the Blackstone Valley. And there's just the tendency to just completely sacrifice services to the point where nothing works anymore. And that's where Westport is, nothing works. You know, they're just completely bottom of the barrel. 3 million is really only about half of what I think we should raise. I think we should raise 7, 7.5. But that's just, I'm a newcomer to town, you know.
Rhode Island.
You may not want to speak, you won't be able to drive home.
Yeah, but the thing, just, just to, just to make sure the place doesn't fall down.
Right.
And that's-
No, it sounds like this.
I don't want to pay a dime if I'm paying for something that doesn't work at all.
Right.
So, I'd rather pay more and get something for it.
Unfortunately, it sounds like you're in the same position this town was in for a long period of time, just on a little larger scale.
I've got six little guys in the school system, so I don't really want them to tank too bad.
Right. So, if nobody has anything else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go, Salz.